Welcome to tonight's council meeting for the city of Covington, September 12th, 2023. If you would, silence your phones or turn them off would be great, or put them on vibrate. This meeting is called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Lewis.
Councilman Botford.
Here.
Councilman Roberts.
Here.
Councilman Inman.
Here.
Councilman Varett.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Rowling.
Here. If you would stand for a moment of silence, please, and please continue your prayers for Phoenix Bigler and his full recovery and his family. Jan Butler, will you lead us in a pledge, please?
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. First, may my orial appointment and council confirmation of— is Brian in, by the way?
He's parking. He'll be here.
There's a problem in the city with traffic, and this administration should do something about it.
Yeah, exactly. So do we want to—
Yeah, let's—
Yeah, we're gonna go straight to the uppers. We can do that. Bear with me. And also, by the way, if there's anybody here for the discussion on the noise, make sure you fill out an orange form and get it to our clerk. We appreciate that very much. Okay, tonight we have two uppers. First, this is for the candidates for clerk of court. First off, we have Jessica Jenkins Brewster. You're gonna have around four minutes, so around 30 seconds left. I'll kind of put my hand up. If you can wrap it up, we appreciate it very much. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you all, Covington City Council men and women, Mayor Mark, along with the citizens of Covington, clerks. I'm honored to be here this evening. My name is Jessica Jenkins Brewster. I am a candidate for St. Tammany Parish Clerk of Court. I am a lifelong resident of St. Tammany Parish, graduate of Covington High School, 1997, 2001 class of Southeastern Louisiana University Political Science major, along with Loyola University School of Law, 2004. I've been an Assistant District Attorney in St. Tammany, Washington Parish for 18 years, left in December to run for clerk of court, and within the last six years of my time at the district attorney's office has seen a decline in the St. Tammany Parish Clerk of Court's office in our judicial system. It is a—there has been a major decline in the processing of legal documents and accuracy. And I feel that it is a dire need in a parish over 250,000 that we have an attorney that sits as your clerk of court. I am an attorney that can give our clerks the adequate training to be able to do the job that they do every day in the judicial department. Our clerk's office is—has multiple departments that all do legal processing and have to, every day, deal with the law, not only in the judicial system with regards to processing civil and criminal dockets and records for the clerk—I'm sorry—for the court every day, but they also have to deal with land records, cancellations, elections, birth certificates, marriage license, and passports. All of these things deal with the law. Time delays allowed by law, filings that deal with law, legal documents, taking in evidence from the court, holding the evidence, sending it up to the appellate courts. All these things are all functions that an attorney would be best in training our clerk courts or our deputy clerks. It would be beneficial for our parish to have a clerk in this position. A similar parish that has an attorney in this position is Jefferson Parish. Our current clerk is not an attorney, nor does she have an attorney that works in that office. We have to pay an attorney at least $250 an hour to train or to be there for the deputy clerks. And this has actually been seen with the delayed filings, which takes over four to six weeks getting your civil documents processed. There's been a decline in the clerk's system, which is the $2 million system that has completely failed us, where there are data breaches that occurs and the confidentiality issues on the internet, and also the issues with not being able to work with other agencies in the judicial system. So at this time, I am running as an attorney to help train our attorney, train our deputy clerks, get them back online as the previous system used to be. I am currently endorsed by our previous clerk prior to the clerk now, Melissa Prito. I received the endorsement of the Alliance for Good Government. I'm humbly asking for your vote, and let's try and get the record straight at our clerk of court's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewster. Appreciate it. All right. Melissa Henry, next, clerk of court, St. Tammany Parish.
Good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see everyone. Thank you for allowing me to share a few minutes with all of you again. My name is Melissa Henry, and I'm your clerk of court, and I'm running for reelection. The clerk of court is an officer of the court. It's a ministerial position. The clerk is neither authorized nor encouraged to offer any sort of legal advice. No, we do not have a staff attorney. We only consult an attorney when we need it, so there's no need to have a staff attorney to run up that expense. I believe I'm the best person for this position because I have two decades of administrative and management experience. I've committed to bring in the office to the 21st century. We now accept credit cards, both at counter service and online. We started e-filing in 2017. We have replaced outdated 20-year-old-plus software with up-to-the-date sophisticated software. We have hired a superb IT department. We now have onsite—offsite data system that is replicating our data in real time. We adhere to all of the laws set out by the archival department at the Secretary of State's office. We have restructured just about every department in our office to work more efficiently. I've aligned our office with the Legislative Auditor's best practices. We have separated duties as well as controls put in place. Reporting now has a cashier's department that now is processing all of the funds associated with all the recordings the same day. We have a purchasing clerk and a receiving clerk. Our family court division is now its own department, and for the first time in the history of the clerk's office, the family court division is issuing within one week's time of filings. Our many clerks are staying within a week of issuing their minutes. That has never been in the history of the clerk's office, and I have people in this audience that can attest to that. Our criminal department is now accepting e-filing. We now have docket clerks in criminal. And we've also worked with the other agencies of setting up designated emails to where we can communicate more efficiently with the other agencies instead of making copies and doing things by snail mail. I'm working with the Clerks Association along with the Supreme Court with implementing a statewide case management system. Thirty-two parishes are already on this platform, and 20 more have signed a contract to move on to this platform. The vendor that is—we're moving to is Software and Services, and they had stated that we were going to be able to be on their platform December of 2022, but it looks like we're not going to be on their new platform until the end of the year. We've received top workplace five out of the last six years. I manage a $12 million budget with 145 employees. We do not receive any taxpayer dollars to support our office, and we're fee-for-service. I'm very excited that—to state that we have had clean, unmodified audits by both our independent auditors and our state legislators. And to address the comment that we've had a data breach, we have never had a data breach, and to continue that narrative for political game is reckless and irresponsible, we have never had a data breach. I have been working with the FBI, and they have confirmed this, as well as GOSEP and the state police. So my name is Melissa Henry. I'm running for reelection for clerk of court, and I'd appreciate your vote come October 14. Thank you.
Thank you. We thank Ms. Henry. We thank Ms. Brewster, and good luck in the campaign. Thank you. Okay. So I think Brian— Is Brian here?
Yes.
Oh, no, exactly. Didn't recommend it. Okay. Mayoral appointment and council confirmation for Brian Trake, Director of Recreation. Mayor, yes.
Thank you, Councilman Rowling. This evening, I would like to ask your support for my appointment of Brian Trake as Director of Recreation. Brian has been involved in youth sports as a player, as a coach, with the Recreation Department for the city of Harahan, for the Recreation Department for Jefferson Parish, and for the past year, he has served as our athletic program supervisor, organizing our basketball, baseball, and football programs, and he has done a remarkable job in the past 12 months. Brian brings to our—to Covington Recreation Department a passion for youth sports. That is something that you really need. It's almost like a calling. And then, almost just as a side note, this past Saturday, Covington Rec fielded four football teams at Covington High School Field. We won all four games. No one scored against us in any game, and we had over 1,000 fans attend that day. That's a big step for Covington Rec Department, and a lot of that is solely the responsibility of Brian Trake. So I'd like to ask your confirmation for Brian as my appointment for Recreation Director.
Great. Thank you, sir. Okay, anything from the council before we go into a motion?
I've got one thing to say about Brian. I think it's what you've done is remarkable for our Rec Department. It seemed like everybody was just kind of down on the Rec Department, and now there seems a sense of pride that's brought back to our Rec Division and stuff. And I really want to thank you for all that you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't mind. Let me echo what Councilman Botford said, but as well, I'd like to say it's hard to find the perfect person to fit into a role, especially these days. Just I feel like people hire warm bodies just to get through, and man, for you to come along to be a part of the city of Covington, truly, truly appreciate your passion for it. So thank you very, very much for doing this.
Okay, so we're gonna move on right—Ms. Inman, you had something?
I just had one thing to say. I was speaking to John Woodrow. He's the principal of Covington High School, and he was incredibly complimentary of Brian and, you know, the way that the facility was upkept while it was in usage and afterwards. So you're certainly making the city of Covington look good in the community, so that's always appreciated.
Councilman Varett.
I don't want to spoil the surprise, but it appears that you are going to be confirmed.
Gotcha. Okay. On that note, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make the motion to appoint Brian as our Director of Recreation.
And I do need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Councilman Varett.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Rowling.
Yes. Brian, congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
So first, I'd like to thank Mayor Mark. I'd like to thank the council. I appreciate the opportunity. It's been a little bit of a journey for the last year, but it's ending up well. Things are working out. Things are coming together. The community has been great. The kids have been good. Like I said, right now, we're in football. Mayor Mark kind of touched on our games for the weekend. We had a good weekend. We play again at Covington the 30th of this month, so feel free to come out, check it out. There'll be probably over 1,000 people again. That'll be our homecoming weekend. Just a few notes on where recreation kind of has evolved over the last year. With baseball, we're up 20% in participation. Basketball's up a little over 15%. And with football, we've got over 100 kids registered that are, you know, participating in the sport. So we've got, you know, some new coaches that have stepped up. And something that we also did this past weekend was use the old throwback jerseys. I know I met with Councilman Smith. We kind of seen some pictures and seen it. The coaches and, you know, some of the parents and stuff that had played here when they were kids and coached here, you know, over the years, played in the jerseys that we used over the weekend. So it just, you know, it was a nice little touch that we had, you know, those guys now have got them reaching out wanting to know what they can do to get their jerseys back. But I told them we wanted them, so they can't have them back. They're ours. But, you know, once again, just, you know, I'd like to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Okay, next on the agenda, the approval of the 2024 council meeting schedule. So everyone here at the council received this. So that being said, I would entertain a motion to accept next year's calendar.
Motion to accept the next year's calendar.
And I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Councilman Varett.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Rowling.
Yes.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
All right. We're gonna go move right on to the consent calendar. Okay. Let's see where we are here. Okay, the regular meeting minutes, August 1st, 2023. Introduction of item number 2023-09-01, an ordinance of the city of Covington amending the established and adopted Chapter 83 fees, Article III, Public Records Request Fees, Section 83-3, Schedule of Public Records Request Fees. Okay, C. Introduction of item number 2023-09-02, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Covington to rezone square 26 of the city of Covington from RM2 multifamily resident—residential, sorry, to RS2 single-family residential and providing for further matters in connection therewith. Next, introduction of item number 2023-09-03, an ordinance of the city of Covington to amend Chapter 98 Utilities, Section 198 of the Covington Code of Ordinances to extend the delinquency penalty timeline on utility bill payments and termination of services. We have a bunch in October. Next, introduction of item number 2023-09-04, an ordinance of the city of Covington to amend the 2023 operating and capital budget. Next, introduction of item number 2023-09-05, an ordinance of the city of Covington setting the compensation for the mayor of the city of Covington for the year 2024. Next, introduction of item number 2023-09-06, an ordinance of the city of Covington adopting the 2024 operating budget and the five-year capital outlay budget for the years 2024 to 2028 for the city of Covington. I do need a motion to accept the consent calendar.
Motion to accept.
I will second that. Roll call, please.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Councilman Varett.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Rowling.
Yes.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
All right. Again, we're gonna have a heavy October, November coming up, so thank you. On the regular agenda, unfinished business, public hearing and action item number—action on amended number 2023-07-01. This ordinance was previously tabled at the August 1st, 2023 City of Covington Council meeting, and this is an ordinance of the city of Covington amending the Covington Code of Ordinances, Chapter 70, Parks and Recreation, Article 1, in general, to add Section 70-2, Hours of Operation. Councilman Botford.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend the previously tabled ordinance that was introduced and tabled on August 1st, 2023 with accordance with the verbiage that has now been changed. And I'd like to kind of go over the verbiage. The hours of operation of every park and recreation facility owned, operated by the city of Covington, including but not limited to those items in Section 70-33 of this code shall be as follows. A. Parks and recreation facilities with permanent light fixtures, hours of dawn until 10:00 p.m. Parks and recreation facilities with no permanent light fixtures, dawn until dusk. This shall not apply to city-sponsored or permitted events in the park or recreation facilities.
Okay, at this point, we're not going to do the motion to amend yet. We can open it up. Any public comments? Anyone from the public like to speak on behalf of this ordinance? Seeing none? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and see if the council has any other comments at this point before we close the public hearing. Nothing? Okay. At this time, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close.
I need a second, please.
Second.
Now, at this point, I do need a motion to amend. If you would read that amendment one more time.
All right, so I'm making a motion to amend, to amend the previously tabled ordinance that was introduced and tabled on August 1st, 2023 with the accordance with—to the verbiage that has now been changed.
Thank you, sir. At this point, I need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Varett.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Rowling.
Yes.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Need a second. As amended.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Rowling.
Yes.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Councilman Varett.
Yes.
Councilman Rowling.
I didn't know I had two votes. And that being said, we got everybody. Okay. All right. We're gonna go right into new business. Resolution number 2023-15, a resolution of the city of Covington, council giving preliminary approval of the credit sale promissory note of the city of Covington, state of Louisiana, in the principal amount of not to exceed $400,000. Councilman Smith, you want to take that?
Yes, thank you. The sale is for that property right across the street. It's to benefit our Covington Police Department. I think we discussed this at length. We felt that it was a great investment for the police department as well as the welfare of the city. This is—this is basically telling us that we're purchasing the property for $400,000, but it'll be paid over a 10-year period. There's a little bit of interest involved, but as you know, we cannot pay more than what the property has been appraised for. So it's a good deal. It's a 10-year purchase process. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Just for point of clarification, the—you are correct. The sellers of the property have requested that they own or finance the property over a 10-year period. Because we are signing a note, it's technically considered by the state bond commission to be incurring debt. Anytime we incur debt, they have to give us their approval. We have Mr. Grant Sluter here from Faux Udel, who has rendered us bond counsel opinion for the last 30 years. I believe this will be a fairly routine matter based on what Mr. Sluter has represented to me. He will be able to appear before the bond commission at their October meeting, and after they hopefully approve the incurrence of debt, we can move forward and acquire the building certainly well before the end of the year. But we're just complying with the request of the Cox family, who don't want all the cash in one year for tax reasons.
I don't.
Okay.
That's pretty much a good explanation.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Okay, at this point, we'll move on to any public comments at this point. Brent, you okay over there? Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public would like to comment at this point? Okay, seeing none. Anyone from the council? Any additional comments? Okay, that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to— Motion to accept.
Need a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Rowling.
Yes.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Councilman Varett.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 2023-16, a resolution of the city—the city council confirming the appointment of Susan Bonnet Bujwa as the District E appointment of the Covington Board of Adjustments. Councilman Varett.
I don't think there's too many people who have met Susan that are not very excited about her energy and her experience and the fact that she cares very deeply about just about everything. And normally, that turns people off, but with Susan, apparently it's just the opposite. So let me just say that I am thrilled that she has decided to do this. She is building a house back in District E, and I think she's gonna be an excellent appointment.
Thank you, sir, for those comments. At this time, anyone from the public that has any additional comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Anything from the council members?
I'll just—I'll just—
Mr. Roberts.
Add, I'm excited to see her name on this list. She is that person. So truly happy to see her putting another foot forward because she does enough already to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to do. So thank you for even appointing her. That's great.
Yes, indeed.
I would like to echo that. Ms. Bonnet's done a terrific job at her prior stay over at the North Share Community Center over there. She did a wonderful job. I was sorry to see her leave. I will say, Councilman Varett, this is one of your better appointments.
Okay.
And just for the record, I would like to point out that Councilman Smith has voted for each and every one of my appointments. So I think this council recognizes my ability to do so.
All right. That being said, I will entertain a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second, please.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Botford.
Yes.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Councilman Varett.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Rowling.
Yes. Okay, next, resolution number 2023-17, a resolution of the Covington City Council confirming the appointment of Ruby Swords as the District B appointment to the Covington Planning and Zoning Commission to fill an unexpired term. Councilman Botford?
Yes. My previous appointment, Alva Smith, her life became very busy with her son playing football at Covington High, which I totally understand. I wish them nothing but the best. And then I had to do a search, and I looked around the area, and I thought, who would be the best fit? And I thought of Ms. Ruby Swords, who's been the Covington Point Homeowners Association president for a long time. She's a traveling nurse, and I think that with her perspective, both with people as well as, you know, running the HOA, that she's gonna bring a lot of experience, a lot of good advice to our board.
Great, thank you. We're gonna go right into any public comments on this? Seeing none, hearing none. Any council—additional council comments?
Yes, I'd like to just say that I've known Ms. Swords for many a year. I won't say how long, but she was amazing then, and I'm certain that she'll be amazing in this position as well.
All right. So at this point, I will go ahead and take—I would entertain a motion to accept, Ms. Swords.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Inman.
Yes.
Councilman Varett.
Yes.
Councilman Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Rowling.
Yes.
Councilman Botford.
Ms. Swords, congratulations. Do you want to say a few words? Okay, we thank you for your commitment to do this. Thank you. Next, resolution number 2023-18, a resolution of the Covington City Council authorizing the CAO, Ms. Erin Bivona, to the—to be designated authorized signature with the Office of the Community Development Program for the city of Covington on the Louisiana Watershed Initiative Project Management. There's a lot to read tonight. Councilman Botford, my apologies.
Okay, this—
Bivona.
Bivona, Mr. Bivona. The Watershed Initiative's been going on. I'm not gonna bore you guys again with all the details since 2016. This allows Erin to be the signator because—what is it, weekly, Erin, that you have to sign off on things constantly?
Yes, right now, the mayor is the approved signatory. And so we're gonna have pay apps and documents floating in and out, so it just makes it simpler to process. The grant law requires that we have a resolution. The grantor requires that we have a resolution stating that I'm authorized to sign.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, anything else from the council at this point? Anything from the public? Okay, that being said, we'll go ahead and do a motion to accept, please.
Motion to accept.
I need a second.
Second.
Row call, please.
Councilman Inman?
Yes.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Rowling?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Okay, still going on here. Resolution number 2023-19, a resolution of the Covington City Council authorizing the mayor to execute a cooperative endeavor agreement with the State of Louisiana through the Office of Community Development. Councilman Boxford, you've had a lot tonight.
This, of course, this is another for the watershed, and this has to do with our lift stations raising our lift stations, the panels, and the, yes. And I think, believe it's $2 million, $2.6 million? And this allows them to pay us and allows the mayor to enter that agreement with the state.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, that being said, anyone from the public? That being said, we'll go right into a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second, please.
Second.
Row call.
Councilman Verrett?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilman Rowling?
Yes.
Councilman Botford?
Yes.
Councilman Roberts?
Yes.
Councilman Inman?
Yes.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the item for discussion only. This is not an ordinance, this is not a change to an ordinance. It's a discussion only with the public and their concerns, and also if any, the council has any additional comments based on those concerns. So that being said, there have been some people reaching out to some of us on the council about the current noise ordinance for the City of Covington, and some concerns about construction or doing some residential things on your own. The ordinance looks like it was on the books since April 99, 1999, and then it was a change in April of 2002, July of 2006, and also January 2016. So there is some vague language in the ordinance currently, and I think what we're gonna do tonight, if you, I think everybody has filled out an orange slip. If you haven't, I need that, and then we're gonna just call you up. We're gonna limit you to around three minutes, and then the council might have some questions to you at that point, just to kinda, you know, see what we can figure out, and then we'll take it from there. So first off, David with Brandon Construction, is David here? There you are, thank you, sir, come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, council, audience. My name's David Nargarath. My wife and I, Joan, and my three boys own Brandon Construction. We've been residents of Covington for 38 years, and been building in the city limits for that long. I do have properties that I take and I rehabilitate in the city limits, in the grid of the city, and we spend a lot of time and effort to bring those up to par of today's standards in Covington. So I would like to have the opportunity to work on the weekends, and I do think that this ordinance, being that it's in a noise ordinance, is inaccurately in that ordinance, because like Larry said, it's vague, and it really, it kinda discriminates one form of work that can be performed on the weekend, aside from everybody else being able to do their job, as far as grass cutting, whatever, pressure washing your house. And let's keep in mind, this ordinance is not just for contractors. It is a citywide ordinance for any construction work being done. So that said, if you're a homeowner, you wanna build your own home, you know, you're working nine-to-five during the week, your opportunity to do the work on your house yourself, so you can get your own home, is limited because you can't do any work on the weekend. You got repairs, what have you. It's just, I think it's a very slippery slope, and it has to be 100% defined much better than it is in the ordinance. And I would like to get it removed from the noise ordinance, because that is enforced by the police, and it is disheartening when the police show up, and you're trying to make an earnest living, and you're run off by the police, especially when you're a resident of Covington, and your heart and soul is improving the housing stock in Covington. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell, so I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for David? Okay, so, next, yeah, of course. Okay, next, we had, is it Tammy? Oh, there you go, I'm sorry. Just state your name and address for the record, and I apologize, I didn't have David there.
Tammy Williamson, I'm at 525 South Vermont Street in District E. I worked with different departments in the city to discuss what our noise ordinances were. I live at an intersection that for the last two years, since Hurricane Ida, I have had thousands, I live in Old Covington, I've had thousands of trucks going by. I've had probably several hundred trucks of heavy clay. I've had oversized loads that get stuck trying to turn on Jenkins, that I've had to have police come to get them out and wreckers. This is real-time what's happening. It's tearing up people's yards when they're trying to make these turns on our very narrow streets in Old Covington. We also have, as far as the noise goes, it's not just about the, it's just about the exterior noise. Someone could go work on the interior of the house, that's fine. It is about keeping the quality of our life in Covington. We have a lot of traffic now, we have every opportunity to do business during the week. That's what we can do, just like I have to do. I have to accommodate restrictions on what my worktimes are, too. So I would invite, you know, we just have to work within the perimeters, but we need a peace, we need peace and quiet sometimes, and to have that during the weekend is not a bad thing. We've got tons of traffic from all the schools every day. Again, working, you know, just have a little bit of peace and quiet in the weekends. There's a lot of construction going on in a very desirable city, which we live in. It's a great city, but we've got, the residents here have got to have some peace and quiet, too, or we're not gonna have, it's just getting, it's getting crazy. So I think just to have a little pause for the weekend, it's not putting anybody out of business. I understand, it's just a pause, but I need a pause, too. We have trucks that vibrate walls, and, you know, we have concerns in our neighborhood. So that's all I want to say, but just please consider how cool our town is and just keep it that way. If not, we're gonna have more angry people, and it's just, it's a lot. So, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move on to Mr. Mike Gilli, and if you can come up and state your name and address, would be great. Thank you.
Mike Gilli, 205 South Jenkins. What is the desire for the change? Is it to lessen the restrictions? Is it just to formalize them? What's the impetus behind this?
Well, we listened into the public. It was brought to our attention that the current ordinance is very vague, which reading it, it is. So I think at this point, we want to hear from the public and the concerns, so we can probably get this to committee and let them look at the ordinance in detail, and have a recommendation for the council to see if we move forward with it. This is just strictly a discussion at this point.
I don't think the ordinance as it stands shuts down work on the weekends. There's enough work that goes on the weekends that I see. And I would agree with Tammy, I think those of us who live here, we like some peace and quiet on the weekends, and I don't think it's overburdening to anybody that's trying to do work on the weekend, repair their house, do what they need to do. So again, I just, I would not lessen it. If you want to do something and tighten it up a little bit, that's fine, make it a little less ambiguous, but I would not make it less restrictive. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, appreciate it. Okay, next, we have Mr. Cecil Hudson. If you can state your name and address, please.
Evening, council, man, mayor, administration. Couple comments regarding the ordinance, the current ordinance. Cecil Hudson, I'm a resident of Covington, as well as a contractor within the City of Covington, and we work when we can. We have experienced, as most contractors and most people that are in the know understand, we are experiencing a 30, 35% shortfall in qualified workers, contractors, suppliers, and we have to work on Saturdays. My protocol is we work six days a week, and we give our guys a break on Sunday. But we work when we can, and we, even the hours of operation have to be flexible for us, because as you guys well know, in the last few weeks, actually a couple months, we've experienced extreme heats, and so we have to start earlier, give the guys a break earlier in the afternoon. So the 7:00 AM, I mean, we get started 5:30, 6 o'clock in the mornings. The other comment I have is that, in the existing ordinance, there's, it's an antiquated ordinance, it certainly needs to be revisited. I'm not, I'm not for abolishing the ordinance at all. I am a residence, a resident of Covington, so I appreciate anything that protects, protects me as a citizen and my quiet living, but as a contractor, we need, we need some flexibility. I don't know how you measure, without everybody having a meter, a decibel meter, how do you even measure that? And as we work in Mandeville, Madisonville, a lot of the gated communities, they have been very flexible with us, because they understand the need for us to be out there when we can be there, to get the work done. And our jobs aren't perpetual, I mean, they don't go into infinity. They're limited in timeframe, so, and the other part is, you know, we're courteous, as most of the contractors that I know and work with, there's just a respect for humanity, and we're courteous to our neighbors or whoever we're working with. And my typical protocol is when I start a project, I go to the adjacent neighbors and introduce myself and give them my business card, and just try to be respectful and courteous to their needs as well, and to understand who I'm working with and what exposure that they have and we have. So we ask you to just review the ordinance, make any amendments that would work for us in today's world. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Teddy Barkening. If you can state your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Teddy Barkening, 324 East 15th Avenue, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to make a few comments, and I have prepared remarks because I'm shy and I have attention deficit, so if you'll bear with me, but I didn't want to get all of my thoughts in. And I also appreciate the comments from the gentleman who represented the construction business. My wife and I bought our first Covington home about 48 years ago, and the city's population has grown about 35% since then. However, much of that growth has happened outside of the center of the city. There's been relatively little population growth in the city's center, which I'll define as Tyler to the Bogofalaya, Justice Center to 8th, which is also a very high-density area of the town as well. Traffic and noise in this central area have ballooned probably 200% in the same period. Credit the hospital, all of the schools, the Justice Center, Parish Maintenance Barn, School Administration Building, and many others. It didn't exist years ago. Streets are clogged for hours in the morning and the evening with school drop-offs and pickups. We have Mardi Gras, we have festivals, we have concerts, we have small packaged trucks darting all over the place and delivering from dawn until dusk. We have concrete trucks, lumber trucks, tree cutting trucks, sod trucks, huge trucks delivering food and supplies to businesses and schools. In the city center that I just described, home teardowns have become common and even necessary. The problem is, these demolition jobs are long, they're extremely loud, and equipment intensive. A block over from me on 16th Avenue a few weeks ago, it took a whole week to demolish a house. It took another week to demolish the slab because of the concrete breaking up, and it took yet another week to complete the site preparation. The work required an excavator, several Bobcats, and a fleet of 18-wheel dump trucks, all running nonstop to clear the debris. The noise was relentless and frankly, mind-numbing. New homes and renovations are getting bigger and bigger, and construction projects are taking longer and longer. It seems that every third house now requires foundation piles, which adds another week or more of nerve-wracking pile drivers and multiple deliveries of piles to the job site. When I first arrived in Covington, the city had about 10 vehicles. The mayor's car, or golf cart, the city inspector's car, four police cars, and four Public Works vehicles. And some of you sitting up there remember this, including two pickup trucks and two dump trucks that rarely even work. The city alone probably has over 100 vehicles today, and they're everywhere taking care of business, thank goodness. Add this to the congestion, add this to the congestion, the explosion of commercial landscaping services in the city center area. Within a 200-yard radius of my home on 15th, this is the gospel truth, it is no exaggeration to say that we suffer 15 hours of roaring high-powered mowers, weed eaters, hedge cutters, and blowers each week. I know this isn't construction, but it's all part of the problem. It sometimes gets so bad nearby that I personally wear earplugs to work in my own yard and gardens. It's like auditory waterboarding. Keep in mind that all of these small engines, heavy equipment, and car lines are also belching a colossal amount of exhaust fumes thick enough to make you gag. So, and as Ms. Williamson mentioned, the good news about all of this is that Covington is a private, is a vibrant and still-growing town, and we should be grateful for this as many small towns in America are disappearing. Many of us who live here, including the contractors who live here, certainly support that vibrancy and the people in the construction and service businesses who help make it happen. I was involved for years in real estate development and construction, so I empathize with the desire to have more time to do the work. However, contractors must also realize that they're just passing through, whether you live here or not. It's not the individual contractors, it's just that you laced all the dots together, and it's an endless maze, it just doesn't go away.
You have 30 seconds, okay?
Residents must live with all the daily drip of disruption noise, neighborhood pollution week after week. All we ask is that we not be awakened at the crack of dawn, that we be able to have dinner on our porches at 6:00 PM without shouting over construction noise, and that we have our town, our property, and our privacy back on the weekends. We're willing to give away 10 hours of our sanity each weekday in exchange for peace on the weekends. I strongly oppose any significant change to the city ordinance, especially with regard to construction and renovation. And I might add that we built our home a few years ago, and to my knowledge, as honestly as I can say, we never had work on the weekends, and we didn't work after 5 o'clock, and I doubt that it had anything to do with the timing of the whole project. It's a cost of doing business, and there are many places across this country that bar any kind of work like that. It's just the cost of doing business.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Next, Ms. Jan Butler, you up? State your name and address for the record, please.
By the way, there's somebody out there with a golf cart that's blinking, so I don't know if that's gonna run better. It's not yours, so I don't know, it's a white one. I'm Jan Butler, I live at 259 North Buchanan Street, and I agree with what the former speaker said, and I just wanted to say that there was a couple of instances in my neighborhood where, when they installed lights, headlights on Bobcats, the construction work went on almost to 9 o'clock, and I did call the police. That's unforgivable. And I know that certain people have said that, you know, the workers arrive at 5:30 while they may not start work, they play their music, and they talk loud while they have breakfast, while they wait for the light to come up, the sunrise. I don't know how you all are gonna enforce this, but I think that the lady who spoke first about the noise ordinance and that the citizens who have lived here for a long time and pay taxes deserve to have some peace and quiet within the parameters of a workday.
Thank you for your comments. Moving on, Ms. Alice Cuvian. State your name and your address for the record, please.
It's my golf cart. My name is Alice Cuvian, I'll go turn it off. My name is Alice Cuvian, I live at 125 South Vermont Street. I live at one twenty-five South Vermont Street. I've lived there for over forty years. I've been here before, trying to maintain a balance in our neighborhood. I think we have a good balance of institutions and homes and houses, and I think we've worked really hard to do that in parks, at stores, and it's, it's a wonderful neighborhood. I want to tell you a story, though. A few years ago, um, on Sunday, a church near my house had their blower going at six in the morning to, um, to blow their leaves before their first service at seven. And it would wake me up on Sunday morning. I was a teacher, I had to be at school at seven o'clock. Did you ever try to teach the Constitution at seven o'clock in the morning? Well, it's not easy, so I needed my rest on Sunday and they would always be out there blowing their leaves. It woke me up every Sunday. I didn't know the, 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 the rules. I think the noise ordinance is seven to eleven, is that right? Seven to eleven, seven in the morning to eleven at night.
Weekends are different than...
Weekends are different? Okay. So I would go out in my robe and I would just stare at them and they thought I was a crazy lady, so they eventually stopped. But I also found out that the law was seven o'clock. I think if we open up this, I think not only is it the construction, but it's also things like that and music in the park. We love the park, but there is going to be loud music. We can put up with it till eleven at night. But if we open it up, you know, we live in a civilized society and I think we have to give and take some things. And I think the seven to eleven law now is perfectly done and, and I think that we can all live together with that. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Has anybody, um, did I not see someone? Yes. Sure. David. If you can state your name and address for the record.
Uh, David Naugerrith, nine one nineteen West Twenty-Fourth Avenue, Covington. So I guess we've been demonized here. Uh, I don't think anybody in this room lives not in a house, out in the wilderness. Their house at some point in time was built. You know, I'm sure when their house was being built, it wasn't a problem and it wasn't a nuisance, but it seems, and I, look, I, I built houses in New Orleans, past Christian Bay, St. Louis, as always, you know, and I, like that gentleman said, I, we do make a point to introduce ourselves to the neighbors and we are very courteous to our neighbors. But like he said, there's a lot of times where it may rain for four, four days out of every week for four weeks straight. So it's an economic hardship also, and that's what a lot of the residents have to understand is that we have bank loans that we have to pay and/or the person we're building a home for. So it's not just impacting the builders. And, and I want to reiterate, like Mr., uh, this fellow here said, it is, it is about homeowners doing work because that's how the ordinance reads. It's not specific to general contractors. It's specific to every resident in Covington cannot perform any construction work between the hours after six o'clock on a Friday till seven AM Monday. That, that means if you want to build your fence and you got a nail gun out there and you're Jack Smith, the homeowner goes to Home Depot, gets all this, you're not allowed to do that. And if there's a neighbor that knows about this ordinance, they're going to call the police on you if they want, if they feel they need to do so. Also, you know, it, it, the, the majority of Covington probably don't even, doesn't even know this ordinance is, exists. It's, it's a small percentage of Covington and I think that is represented here tonight. So, you know, so are we kowtowing to, you know, four streets in Covington or are we, as a council, representing the whole city as a whole with this ordinance? And that's, that's my final statement. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, any, anyone from the council before I have a recommendation here? I think we appreciate everybody coming out and voicing your opinion because that's what we wanted to hear. And, um, I think at this point, my recommendation is, um, turning this over to our safety committee, which is chaired by Councilwoman Barret, uh, Councilwoman Enman, and myself, or we in that, on that committee. And then we will look at this ordinance, see where maybe there's some vague, um, language and give a recommendation at that point to the council to look at. The public will be invited again if we come up with a solution that we feel that might fit the bill for this and the public will have an opportunity to comment on that, too. It'll be introduced and then you'll have public comment. So that being said, um, that's my recommendation of, uh, Chairman Barret. We'll set a date on that and we can get that together and we'll just kind of go through this ordinance and see, see what we need to do, okay? All right. Thank you, everybody that, um, had an opportunity to say something tonight. We appreciate you. Okay, we're going to move right on to, uh, council, district, and committee reports. We're going to go right to District B. Councilwoman Boxer?
Okay. Let's see. So I wanted to mention a, a few things real quick about the Food Bank. First thing, that, that one of their most needed items is like cereal, they need it really bad. They're also doing a, uh, forty trees in the Bogof, uh, Bogochina Park for their fortieth anniversary. They're going to be selling Christmas trees and they're going to decorate them. Go to their website, northshorefoodbank.com. And, uh, all the portions, of course, will go back to the Food Bank. Kind of a exciting thing. Also, on that, uh, note, let's see, here. For the August stats, averages for August of twenty twenty-three were sixty-eight daily households, eighty-three daily boxes. Total for August twenty twenty-three was nine hundred and fifty-seven total households, uh, one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight total boxes. Uh, twenty twenty-two comparison, the August averages, households were eighty, average daily boxes to ninety-nine. So still up there on that. One thing I wanted to mention, too, or give a shout-out to is, uh, our CAO, Aaron Pavona for...
Thank you for that.
Wearing multiple hats right now. Uh, you've been all over the place, I know that, and, uh, really appreciate everything you've done. The park looks great and, uh, appreciate your coordinate. They have, they've been doing a great job. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move right on to District C. Councilman Roberts?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I've been getting some emails about some progress happening in River Forest, so it's always good to see that, that ball keeps rolling. Uh, of course, you'll say speed of government, I completely understand, it just never seems fast enough to me, but, uh, but it's nice to see the progress happening. One quick thing, I know this is kind of obscure, but the red light that's been put in at, uh, the new turn light at Covington High School, uh, coming back from going towards Hammond, they put in rather than a regular light, they put in arrows, red arrow, yellow arrow, green arrow. And I've seen several people, because I live in River Forest, stop at the red arrow, make sure it's clear, and then go. And I just want to make sure people know, because I had to look this up, it's not a stop sign, you have to stay stopped. It's a, it's stopped. It's a, so I think the arrow throws everybody off and they think it's just stop, okay, it's clear, now I can go. You have to wait for the green arrows. It's just a tidbit of information there, uh, for people that might be watching. Nine eleven was yesterday, that's a day that weighs really, really heavily on me. And so, uh, not for any specific reason except for it's just traumatizing to know that it happened. And, uh, I just want to commend Covington, uh, Stephen Michelle for the fire department for putting on the Tunnel to Towers Run on Saturday. Great event, uh, way to recognize just the, the unsung heroes of that day. Uh, there was a piece of the tower, one of the twin towers there that you could see, which is tangible, just heartbreak, heartbreak really is what it is. And then last night, uh, Covington High put on a nine eleven tribute, um, that was unbelievable. And the students were there, school board faculty was there, council members were there, the mayor was there. There were so many people that just came together to say, this is what it looks like when people come together to make a difference and honor those who paid all of them and sacrificed. So, to everyone that was there last night, to all of our firefighters and first responders, unbelievable job last night. And, uh, and lastly, Brian, congrats, man. You're amazing. I'm so glad to see you aboard and, uh, keep doing what you're doing. You're going to make a difference.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to District D. Councilwoman Enman.
A couple of quick things, uh, delineators. We are actually looking at putting in some, some of those out. One of the concerns with our residents is speeding. So this is a plausible way of addressing that. We are, uh, well, I will be knocking on some doors in the district to get your thoughts on the placement of the delineators. Um, again, the mayor's been very generous with his time in saying, hey, look, these, these are something that obviously can address some of these concerns. The nice thing is with the geography of some of the district, Simpson's Creek runs through, so it provides a perfect spot to put it to where, how can I say this? It's not in someone's yard or a concern, so Mother Nature's helping out. Another thing that, uh, was discussed with the mayor and he was, uh, this came out of a discussion was the, a potential crosswalk at Seventeenth. Uh, so that's something that may be in the works, hopefully at some point. Uh, I said, that's why I say at some point. I, I do realize that there is, uh, you know, the government crawl in, involved with that. So, but nonetheless, the thought is, is in place and hopefully the process will play out and benefit everyone. The library, school is in session, it will be busy, it will be busy around the library, not only vehicular traffic, but also foot traffic. They have a number of things going on to the library, it's as always, they have the chess club, uh, on third Saturdays, yoga on Wednesdays. So if you want to exercise your body, uh, body or your mind, by all means, please do so. If you would, if you're like me and uncomfortable doing yoga in public, they do do Zoom, so I'm, I'm not doing yoga. And then, of course, uh, what Councilman Roberts mentioned, the nine eleven, um, tribute at Covington High School. I do want to point out that there were more, more than just, more students there from, than from just Covington High School. There were students from around the community. So when Councilman Roberts mentions the concept of unity, which was on display after nine eleven, uh, that concept came to the fore last night and it was a beautiful thing, it truly was. So, and that's it for me.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Councilman Barret?
Yeah, I, I, a lot of positive feedback on the nine eleven event, so kudos for really putting it all together. I know a lot goes into that, so, um, thanks to everyone who participated. I was at a different function. Speaking of functions, Thursday night, Furman Auditorium, Johnny and June. Good Lord. Hotter than a pepper sprout. All right, so, um, let's move on. October fifteenth, mark your calendars, the Covington Heritage Foundation is going to have a History and Mysteries Day. We're going to, um, if you're familiar with the area, basically the, uh, the Train Depot, that entire block will be blocked off and you can hear stories that, uh, will be more exciting than me and the mayor singing. It'll be fantastic. It'll be off the charts. I'd want a special shout-out to Lola and Haven Coffee and Cocktails. We're going to have libations, huh? And small bites. And it's free. Let me say that one more time. It's free. So please, uh, please consider joining the Covington Heritage Foundation, um, and coming out to that event. Speaking of, it is never too early to buy your tickets for the History and Holly Home Tour. It is official, the five houses that have been sent to press, buy your tickets, come on out and do that. I'm just having a good time tonight because, again, if you, if you, all the events we have, all the, all the, uh, the things we do, and we're having fun with it, right? We're the warmest city in America. We used to be the coolest city in America, but it's the heat wave. But all kidding aside, thank you to the mayor, thank you to the city administration. Brian, well deserved. And, uh, it was a close vote, but it was, it was, it was worth it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We're going to go right into Councilman Lawrence Smith.
Thank you. Yeah, Brian, that's impressive. Four teams, four shutouts. Who's the defensive coordinator? Congratulations anyhow. The only thing I'd like to mention is the, uh, event coming up, November fifth. Uh, it's to benefit Hope House and I think everybody's familiar with Hope House. That's where the abused children in our parish and Washington Parish go to try and get their lives back. This is one of their big, big fundraisers and it's called Men Who Cook. And you're looking at somebody that's going to be another, a participant on a cooking team. And I'm not the cook, so the food's going to be good. But I am responsible for helping raise funds, uh, so we will be out there, um, hustling and trying to raise a few dollars. Thank you. Yeah, and the event is November fifth, which is a Sunday, and it's from four PM to seven PM. It's on the parking garage roof of the Justice Center on Jefferson, um, Jefferson Avenue. I'm looking for the website where you can actually go purchase your tickets and donate to your favorite cooking team. Rick Smith is, uh, going to be participating with Valencia Restaurant, which is tremendous Cajun-Spanish kind of, uh, combination restaurant. The food's fabulous, um, but they're my restaurant partner. And, uh, you've got a website for me?
If you don't mind, uh, it's cachopehouse.org and just go to the events page. It's basically the homepage of Hope House. Uh, you can go there, click the link and you can get all your tickets there.
So thank you, Joey.
Yes, sir.
And, um, I think it's a great event. I think everybody has a good time. I've never seen anybody leave that event without a smile on their face. Some people actually walk out of there spending a lot of money because there's auction items that are incredible. They've got some really great auction items. It's a lot of fun, music, food, obviously, um, and beverages. So anyhow, thank you for your time. That's all I have for the night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just have one thing and it's, it's so good to hear so many events like, um, Councilwoman Barret was mentioning, so many nonprofits in our area. I know in the city limits of Covington, I think there's like twenty-plus nonprofits. It's like a hub, it really is. With that being said, another, another nonprofit is having their event, Safe Harbor, is, uh, having their eleventh annual fundraising gala this Saturday at seven PM. It's going to be at the Cas, uh, the Harbor Center, my apologies, in Slidell. So I know there's tickets, um, remaining for that. Great cause again, a lot of great causes, but it does have a, a unique city, unique parish, so, um, if you have any, a chance to go to those events, that'd be great. Okay, that being said, we're going to turn it right over to Mayor Mark.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Rowling. Just to, a side note on the delineators and the speeding, um, we, we've ordered some more speed humps. Uh, Councilman Barret and Councilman Smith and I will be meeting to look at the, uh, the, um, that, the drag strip from Old Landing to, uh, past St. Paul's. And we're going to be looking at, uh, at maybe a combination of speed humps and delineators in that area. We know the delineators are, are, in, when placed in the right spot, work. Uh, it's taken a little bit of a learning curve and we've gotten there. Uh, speed humps are working well, but we also know, recognize that at some point enforcement is a very important part of this, of this, of getting the speeding under control within the city. Our first step in that was a few years ago when the council significantly raised the pay for our police officers. Which brings us up to now a fully-staffed police department, uh, which has, has made really great headway in the city. Last fall, Chief Farrell converted an administrative police position to a full-time traffic enforcement officer. Earlier this year, the council, uh, helped us create a position for a second traffic enforcement officer. So at my request, Chief Farrell has provided me with a couple of numbers that I think you and the public might find interesting. In July of two thousand twenty-two, our police department wrote thirty-eight citations. In July of two thousand twenty-three, our police department wrote one hundred sixty-eight citations. In August of twenty twenty-two, we wrote forty-eight citations. In August twenty twenty-three, we wrote one hundred seventy-two citations. So we have police officers out there, shooting radar, watching you roll through the stop signs, and it's not just a smile and a wave anymore, but, uh, it could be a warning or it could be a ticket. So, uh, I thought, uh, y'all might find that interesting in that context. A little update regarding construction of the Bogoflia River Bridge as it relates to the, uh, closing of the Tammany Trace. Uh, I initiated and had a meeting with Department of Transportation this past Friday. I met with Lacy McCaskill, who's the project engineer for the district, and I met with Dalton Williams, who is the district engineer, along with President, uh, Parish President Mike Cooper. They related to me, relate to me that, different from what was recently reported, the trace... the trace is only going to be closed when Bo Brothers needs it to be closed with work directly. It's not going to be a straight closure for a solid fifteen months, as was reported. Uh, they, uh, Lacy McCaskill has, uh, tasked Bo Brothers with, uh, providing her with a list of those activities that are going to take place near the trace and maybe, uh, an estimated timeline as to, uh, what weeks at a time, uh, the trace will be closed. I made a suggestion to DOTD that we line the edge of the road with what I call water barricades. These are these large orange and white barricades, eighteen inches wide, filled with water. They were not receptive. Uh, it sticks out a little too much into the road, which would cause the traffic in the, uh, on the highway to have to shift lanes and then they would have to paint all new lanes, what wasn't going to happen. Uh, most of this was due to the fact that the barricades themselves are eighteen inches wide. In my travel back and forth across the Bogalaya River Bridge last, um, weekend, I noticed that the space between the sidewalk and the edge of the road on the bridge itself was wider. So earlier this week, I went there with a tape measure, I measured it, took a picture, sent it to DOTD to inform them that that area was twenty-four inches wide. And I have now asked them to consider barricades at least on the Boston Street Bridge. Keep in mind, we have a sidewalk that goes from the trace to Lee Lane. And when the trace is closed, people are going to use that sidewalk. So I thought this was a common sense safety feature, if we could get DOTD to at least put the barricade right there along the bridge. Uh, we also have a curb right there on the back driveway of Advanced Auto that, uh, is a rather steep curb, it's not a nice little slope. And I've asked DOTD permission for our Public Works Department to go in and remove that curb and reinforce cement and make it a, a smooth transition. Uh, earlier this morning, I met with Patrick Brooks at Brooks Bike Shop and kind of shared all this information with him. So, uh, we are doing what we can do and DOTD is, is, is working with us as best they can. Oh, man, we talked about, uh, it's that time of year where the events just keep on rolling and it, uh, keep on going. So, um, we've got, um, as, as Councilman Barret mentioned, we've got Johnny and June on Thursday night. Uh, the first of our onstage, um, onstage season passports are now available. There, those are one hundred dollars each and include all four shows at Furman. And, uh, later in the year, we will have an encore performance by Mike Super, the magician, who, uh, who has sold out both times that he's been here, really, really good. Um, this Friday evening is Sunset at the Landing, we've got two musical acts there. On Sunday, it's the ever popular Zumba with the mayor. That will actually take place at the Food Bank this year, uh, this month, uh, as a awareness for that, uh, for that organization. On the nineteenth, we have the mayor's blood drive. On Saturday, the twenty-third, we have the Keep Covington Beautiful River Sweep, starting at Bogalaya Park. Bring your canoe or your kayak out and help us, uh, do a little cleaning on the river. We mentioned also on Sunday, the twenty-fourth, Haven Fest at the corner of, uh, right here in the corner of Kirkwood and New Hampshire. They're actually going to set their musical stage up in the parking lot of the Justice Center, facing out towards Haven. Food trucks, free music, uh, should be a good time. And then we, uh, Rockin' the Rails starts the last Thursday of the month. And we have the, uh, John Cleary from New Orleans is coming over and will be performing at Peter Atkins Park. That begins at five thirty and like all our Rockin' the Rails show, that is free to the public. And then that'll be followed Friday evening by the Columbia Street Block Party. October fifth, Rockin' the Rails with Whiskey Business. And also on the sixth and that weekend, the Saint Tammany Parish Fair. So we'll be having, uh, all those activities at the fairgrounds as well as a parade. And then on October seventh, Bluesberry Music Festival at Bogalaya Park. Alice has scooted out, but I always like to remind her that we do, at this point, turn down events at Bogalaya Park on a regular basis. Um, on, almost on a monthly or every two months, someone comes to us and says, oh, it's a beautiful park, we would like to close it and do X, do Y. And, uh, we grandfathered in Bluesberry, Monster Mash, uh, we have our Sparks in the park and we have Chef's Choré. But, you know, if, if we allowed it, uh, the park would be closed every, uh, every weekend throughout the fall and spring. Uh, what we have been doing is encouraging them to use the Covington Trailhead, which has great parking all the way around it, you can approach it from three hundred and sixty degrees, we can close off a couple of streets and, uh, and that has worked out very well. Um, and then we, we'll get into Rockin' the Rails again on, every Thursday and, and I'm going to stop there. But in October, just on our new newsletter, which is just out, you can pick them up in the little green boxes around town, we have eighteen events in the month of October. So there is just a whole lot going on, it's a wonderful time to be in Covington. Uh, and hopefully, uh, Covington will return to being the coolest city in, uh, America and one of the three coolest in the northern hemisphere. Vienna, Paris, Covington.
Thank you, Mayor. Any, anything else for the, Ms. Pavona?
No, thank you, Councilman Rowling.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. Councilman Boxer.
I, I forgot to ask you this question. I, I know you said that they're going to close the, the trace, you know, when they need to for safety reasons, obviously. How are they going to do that with, uh, like the kayakers and the people that are going below it? It's a safety thing, are they going to shut that off, do you know, or did they say anything?
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Okay, that being said, um, remember October, our October meeting in these chambers will be October third, twenty twenty-three, at six PM. And y'all have a safe, um, weekend, a safe week, and this meeting is adjourned.
Rod's just, Rod's just leaving.
Has John, has John Alfred's wife worked?
Thank you, sir. What?
That's why I thought she was good.
Hey, Aaron, that's what I-
What he told me. I'm getting better, I'm getting better. I know, but I'm getting better.
When you probably look at-
I need to question you.
Guess what?
I'm running against his camera. I want to get dialed in.
I did.
Hey, Rod, as long as you need anything, come bring your microphone.
I'm going to get you that website, we're the website of the Brick Smith Club team. You make your little twenty dollar donation, buddy. Boom. Take care, man. Good meeting you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, David.
We're going to get to work.
Appreciate you putting in, giving us some, listening.